Good evening. I'd like to call to order the board meeting for October 18th, 2016, in the village of Bartlett. And the first order is a roll call. Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Camerar?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace is absent.
Here.
Yeah, sure. Right. Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. Loud and clear.
All right. I will be present for the first half anyway, depending on how my signal works.
Okay. Are there any nominations for the chairman of the meeting in the absence of, well, in the...
Yes, I would like to nominate TL, if I may.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Well, trustee Danny moved to appoint trustee Aaron's as chairman of the meeting, and that was seconded by trustee Camerar, and I'll do a roll call. Trustee Aaron's?
Upstream.
Camerar?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes, but I think TL could have voted for herself. It's fine. Yes, that's a yes vote.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
That's it.
That's it.
Okay. And then trustee Aaron's?
I'm just gonna do it from here. Thank you all for your confidence. Okay. We've had the roll call. The invocation.
Be time for the...
Tonight we have Mr. McGresh, or I'm gonna just spoil this awful, Gajar, from the BAPs Temple.
President Wallace, Board of Trustees of Village of Bartlett, respected residents, namaste, jai swaminarayan. I am Ruges Gajar, priest from BAPs Swaminarand Mandir, Bartlett. We are honored by your invitation to offer prayers. We will recite a short prayer. The prayer is from our scripture Vedas. It is more than 10,000 years old prayer. It is recited at all Hindu spiritual events. Prayers are for peace. It is called Shanti Pat. I will recite it in Sanskrit and then give a translation in English. If it is convenient for your pleas, join your hands as prayers are offered. [Singing] Vande shri purushotamam cha paramam daamaksharam gnianadam. Vandae praga jibhagta mevamanagam brahmasvarupam mudha. Vandae yagnapuruusha dascharanam shri yogiraajam tatha. Vandae shri pramukham mahantamani sham. Mokshaya bhakti asada. Ath shanti paathah harihi omadhyohu. Shanti ranta rikshagoon shantihi prathavi. Shanti raapah shanti rokhdayah shantihi. Vanaspatayah shanti viswadevaah. Shanti brahma shantihi sarvagoshantihi. Shanti reva shantihi sama. Shanti reedi. Jato yatah samih setatono abhayankuru. Sandhakuru prajapyo bayannah pasubyah. Vishwani devasavitar duri tani parasuvah. Jatvadran tanna asuvah. Om shantihi, shantihi, shantihi. Shushanti r bhavatu. Sarvarisht shanti r bhavatu. May there be peace in heaven, peace in the atmosphere, peace across the waters. May there be peace on earth. May peace flow from herbs, plants, and trees. May all the celestial beings provide peace. May peace provide all quarters. May that peace come to me too. May there be peace, peace, and peace. Thank you.
I'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic whose name is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And trustee Carbonaro, will you lead us in the national anthem, please? Please?
National anthem? You're gonna sing that, huh? See if I know where it is.
You know how it starts? Oh. Can you see? Are the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail? At a twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars? Through the baleen that we shine? O'er the ramparts we watched? Where so gallantly we streaming? And the rocket's red glare? The bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night? That our flag was still there. Oh, say us that our stories may go? And our yet brave? O'er the land and over the sea? And the home of the brave?
Play ball.
Go Cubs. And thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Gajar.
Tomorrow, tonight.
Okay, our next order of business is, wasn't that nice to start out with the national anthem?
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Is the consent agenda. All items with asterisks, muke up the consent agenda. Is there anybody that wants to add to it or take away from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to add F1, street sweeper purchase.
Okay. Anybody object to that?
No.
Okay. So, we entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda, including items D1, 2, 3, and 4, and item F1.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by...
Trustee Hopkins.
Hopkins? Hopkins. It was moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Danny. All those in favor?
No, it's a roll call.
A roll call.
Roll call, please. All right.
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Camerar?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. Our next agenda item is the treasures report from August of 2016.
Thank you, trustee Aaron's. I'll start out this evening with the sales tax report. Total sales tax through June of 2016 is up 12.17 percent over the same time period last year. Move on to the motor fuel tax allotment report. Through July of 2016, revenue is $246,154, and it represents a 9.30 percent decrease from the same time period last year.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Our next agenda item is the president's report, and for that, I will turn the meeting over to Pam Roliter, who is the curator of our village museums.
Thank you, trustee Aaron's, and helping me tonight is Assistant Village Administrator Paula Schumacher. So, good evening. I'm Pam Roliter. I'm the director of the Village of Bartlett Museums, and this past August 31st brought an end to the 25th Annual Passport to Adventure Program, sponsored and produced by the Museums in Nature Center members of the Kane-Dupage Regional Museum Association. For the past 19 years, the Village of Bartlett Museums has participated in this program that encourages children ages four and older and their families to visit local museums and nature centers in Kane and Dupage counties throughout the summer months. This program has been a very popular activity for our village's families with the distribution of more than 600 booklets in Bartlett alone. I should say we printed 18,000 booklets this year. And Bartlett is one of the top museums in distribution numbers also. I would like to add that I am the president of the Kane-Dupage Regional Museum Association, and along with 60-plus member institutions and many individual members who know the value of our missions and the diversity and engaging opportunities we provide to our visitors year-round. Not only are our institutions a center for learning, but also for fun, and contributes to our local economies by bringing people into our communities who discover our restaurants to dine in and our stores to shop in. So, the Village of Bartlett Museums is proud to announce that this year, we had five families who visited all 64 museums this summer, which is quite an amazement. Think to yourself, how many museums did I visit this summer? They visited 64. We congratulate each one of them on this amazing accomplishment and their dedication and perseverance to do this. Listen to the stories, the driving stories. We know lots of good driving stories. So, first, I would like to ask Jordan Boston and her mom Amy to come forward. So, Jordan is eight years old. She attends Sycamore Trails Elementary School. This is her fourth year participating in the Passport Program. Now, her mom Amy there had the goal this year to complete all the sites in the book, and Jordan was on board for that, too. And Amy took her niece Annie Wallander with to see all the nature centers and museums. So, Jordan's favorite site was the Dupage Children's Museum because she could play and experience all the hands-on activities. Amy loved learning about the history of the local communities, such as her own hometown of Bartlett. And so, will this family participate for a fifth time next year? Amy says yes. So, thank you very much and congratulations. So, next, I'd like to have Annie Wallander and her parents, Mary and Brad. So, Annie is 15 years old, and she is a sophomore at Bartlett High School. We know now how she spent her summer, visiting all the sites with her cousin Jordan and Aunt Amy. The family had such a great time together. They marked their passport booklets and plan to return to their favorite museums and take some friends along with, too. Now, in the many conversations I had with Annie's mom, Mary, and her aunt, and now Annie tonight, I'm really not sure what her favorite site was, but we talked about so many. So, I think we decided on that it was the Knack Knolls Nature Center in Naperville? Was that, and the Carolin? We talked about the Carolin, too, that she enjoyed that, too, in Naperville. And so, thank you very much and congratulations. The next family I was gonna call up is not here tonight, but we will tell you briefly about them. It's Axel and Vala Kunz and their parents Sandy and Jason. And Axel and Vala are frequent visitors to the Bartlett Depot Museum. Their enthusiasm and smiles brighten staff day when they visit. Axel is a kindergartner at Sycamore Trails, and Vala attends preschool at Streamwood High School. For several years, the family has participated in the Passport to Adventure Program. The kids look forward to visiting the varied sites. For Sandy and Jason, it gives the family a chance to discover and explore places they didn't even know existed. And yes, they will be participating next year. Heck Farm was their favorite site, along with Willowbrook Nature Center, where Vala got to handle a mouse, a real live living mouse, and discovered just how soft his whiskers were. So, congratulations to them. Next, I'd like to have Liam Worsel and his mom Katie. And Grandma's here tonight, so Grandma, oh, come on, come on. You can come up, too. Oh, she can't take the picture. Good. Okay. All righty. So, a year and a half ago, the Worsel family moved to Bartlett. A visit to the Depot Museum last summer, the family learned about the Passport to Adventure Program, and they started on their big adventure. What they enjoyed most about participating last year and this year was the fact that they quickly began learning about Bartlett, the surrounding communities, and all that was offered in the local institutions. Liam has also loved the program, too, and it's been a great way for the family to spend time. With the goal of visiting all sites this year, the family quickly met their goal before baby Charlie, who technically did visit all the sites. The newest addition joined the family on August 3rd. Liam is a kindergartner at Centennial Elementary School, and he loves everything cantini, from climbing on the tanks to visiting the First Division Museum. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to have Ella Joy and Asaf Wan and her mom Annie. Mike couldn't make it tonight. He's still at work. So, the Wans are also frequent visitors to the Depot Museum, and staff has certainly enjoyed their visits and watching the kids grow through the years. If the Wan family looks familiar, they were also recognized last year with the mayor's medallion for visiting all the sites. It's not unusual for Bartlett families to be recognized back-to-back years. This is not the first time it has happened. In fact, it has happened on several occasions. It's a testament to the fun and learning museums can bring to children and their families. Ella Joy, seven years old, is a second grader, and Asaf, five years old, a kindergarten, wanted to visit all the sites this year, and Mom Annie, who confesses not to be a road warrior, agreed to the adventure. SciTech, Morton Arboretum, Blackberry Farm, and Napier Settlement were some of the favorite sites this year for the family. Annie noticed how the kids had retained a lot of stories they heard last year from the docents and reiterated them while visiting the sites. And they will also be participating again next year, right? You want to do them all again? All righty. We'll see you next year.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you to all the parents and children that enjoyed this Passport to Adventure, and we hope to see you all back next year. Good job. Okay. Our next agenda item is the question and answer, president and trustees. Anybody got a question or an answer?
I would just have one. What were we just handed this evening? What is this? When we passed the TIF bonds, the Elmer Chicago Stone Ordinance that approved of their refinancing of their TIF bonds, there was a provision in the ordinance that required that we get this document, which is basically the order, at the following meeting, after which they set the prices, and they just set the price on those bonds, so we know the interest rate and the final amount. So, this is just passed out to you, and it'll be noted that it's in the record, and that's, there's no action required by the board. It's simply that it be disseminated and placed up record. Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
My question is, are we gonna sing the national anthem before every board meeting? I thought that was really cool. I mean, I think, I think...
Aaron?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think so. The only reason why you're singing tonight is because I wasn't there and I can't sing, so...
Oh, okay. I thought it was nice.
Are you relieved?
I think we should do it. This has to leave us every time, though. It was really hard hitting us high notes.
You know, the thing is, we were with our grandchildren this weekend, and I said, something came up, and I said, "Well, let's sing the national anthem," and they weren't very good at it. And I think that's a shame. I think a lot of kids don't sing it enough, and perhaps we should encompass that in our meetings, Mr. President.
Well, I gotta tell you, it's much more, it's very weird watching the Cubs at 8:08 in the morning.
Oh, Breger. Okay, our next, if there's no other questions, our next agenda item is the town hall, and this is where each resident, if they so choose, may make a statement for three minutes. We know that many of you are here for the Ashton Gardens, and we'd appreciate it if you select one person to kind of wrap up what we've been through these last three public hearings. I think that would be beneficial for all of us. But if you want to come up and say something, and we do take compliments, please come to the podium. You have a three limit, a three-minute time limit, and Lorna, our clerk, is very tough, so she'll let you know when your three minutes are up. So, anybody want to make a comment? I don't want to scare anybody off.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay.
Here, we have one lady.
Oh, okay. Come on up. Hi. Please state your name and address.
Hello. Hello, everybody. My name is Rochelle...
That's not turned on, I don't believe. Scott?
Mike. Gotcha. Hello, my, my name is Rochelle Pribelski. My address, did you say my address?
Yes.
It's 875...
Name and address.
Pardon me?
Yes.
875 Brewster Lane in Bartlett. I have lived in Bartlett since 1975 and have been my third home in Bartlett. My husband, who is now deceased, and I purchased a Lexington home near South Bartlett Road and Struckman, the first Lexington homes to be built. We, Jerry and I, experienced many problems with the home, as our neighbors did with the builder, as far as them not only responding, but also to the quality of the windows and doors. Result was then-president of the village, Catherine Melchard, and the trustees stood behind us. We were about 60 of us attended a village meeting, which a Lexington VP was there proposing building on the east side of South Bartlett Road. They already had 100 contracts. After 45 minutes of us relaying our problems, President Melchard had no problem telling Lexington they had to take care of us first before starting building more homes. We felt so good. Neighbors and Jerry and I wanted to walk out and just do the Irish jig outside. We lived in Bartlett 15 years at that time. We felt that we lived in a town where the elected officials really cared about the residents. We really mattered. From what I hear, it may be an altogether different scenario regarding the proposed wedding banquet hall that is proposed. The residents who live right where the developer wants to place it are going to suffer, from how I see it, a reduction in their home values. When they go to sell their homes, who will want to buy with that nearby, with various problems that will occur? Jerry and I were involved with other situations since that Lexington scenario. There is a sports bar in town who was proposing various forms of so-called entertainment coming in about maybe six or five, six years ago. It was not conducive to the family type of community Bartlett has been for so, so long. It was very disheartening to spend so much time and energy only to have the village go along with the business owner. I'm here because I feel for the people that are in that immediate area. I do not live in that area, but there were other people at that time who came from other parts of town to support us, and so this is payback time. I have been very active in two civic organizations in Bartlett. My husband was also super active. We wanted to give back to our community who gave back to us. My last statement is compassion and common sense have to be the major thrust here, compassion for the homeowners and common sense for the good of our village. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
My name is William Berg. I live at 137 Amherst Drive in Bartlett. I spoke at the first meeting with my opposition to reiterate what I said. I think this facility is doomed from the start. We don't need another doomed facility in town. We have plenty of facilities, just city vacant. Once it does fail, who knows what's gonna go in there? I know there's zoning ordinances, but those can be changed as well. Also, it's taking away revenue from two facilities in town that are some of the best assets that we have. Once those assets start to go downhill because they are taking business, if this is successful, well, who's gonna pay for that? As the taxpayers, we're gonna have to pay for it. I don't think it's a good idea. I realize the land's been sitting there 50 years. I think everyone's got great intentions to get this land developed, and it's something useful for the community. I just don't think this is the right choice. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, we'll close that part of our...
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Different subject, different...
I'm, I'm so sorry.
Yeah. I'm Terry Witt at 471 South Western Avenue here in Bartlett, and I'd like to speak on behalf of the TOD plan, which is a very good professionally-written plan, a lot of effort into it. It's been based on success stories in other communities. I think it's something that gives downtown Bartlett a real chance to succeed, something that I think a lot of people have been waiting for. We've only been here since 2003. Downtown could use a shot in the arm, and the TOD plan provides that possibility. Now, one of the things that people have mentioned is that they talk about a TIF as a way to finance the plan, and one of the things about the TIF is, the last time we tried for one, I think a big reason that it didn't succeed was there was no plan. Here, we've got a plan. We've got a chance to work on the TIF, and when we talk to the other taxing districts who, we need their support, when they see that there is a plan that is actually actionable, I think we're gonna get a much more favorable response from them. Now, there's a couple of ways of going about that. Not only this group to endorse the TOD plan in its entirety as it is, because it's just a plan, but take some action on a couple of the easy, low-hanging fruit. Do them right away. For example, complete streets is recommended as a policy to be adopted by the community. And complete streets is a policy that shifts the measure of success from getting cars from point A to point B, you can get them there, to getting people to where they want to go safely. It means that when you have a complete streets policy, you take in everybody's ability. You look at pedestrians, you look at bicycling, you look at mass transit, you look at all of these different factors on projects going forward in transportation. One of the other things on the TOD, they recommend 25 miles an hour speed limits in downtown. Right outside, it's 30 miles an hour. Statistically, your chance of survival being hit by a car at 30 miles an hour is 50.
Three minutes.
All I can say is, you could use the TOD. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Suzanne Duffy. I live at 212 Lido Trail, and my property backs up to this proposed development. This is my first experience with local government, and I have to say I've been confused by the whole process. We've, I've attended several meetings. The last meeting that had a vote was the zoning board, and at that meeting, they did not give their approval to their zoning variances. They wanted to lessen their parking. So, my question to the board is, I need... This development is going to upset our lives, our everyday lives, our weekend lives. That's the time for our family. That's the time to relax. And so every Friday and Saturday until 2:00 in the morning, we're going to have disruption Sundays in the afternoon. The other clarification I wanted to make was there was a petition that was submitted last meeting that stated that 20% of the property owners that order this property signed a petition saying they were against it. And I gathered that petition, and I had 75% of the signatures on that petition. There were nine out of 12. I had two other verbals that I was not able to get their signature before submitting this petition. So I think that should say something. I don't know if you looked at that petition, but I think you need to consider the feelings of everybody that borders that property. And then the last thing I would like to question is, has the board examined the financials of this company to determine if this project is feasible for them? I'm concerned because they have four properties. They opened one in 2009, one in 2011, one in 2013, and one in 2015. Now he's proposing to open three next year. How does that work? And are they capable of, you know, affording all of that? I think it's too much too soon. They're overstretching. They could possibly be overstretching their means. And lastly... Okay, I won't say it.
If you can be very brief, please finish.
Mr. Cozio from the zoning board spoke at the last meeting, and he spoke about the silent majority. I feel that there is not a silent majority. I think there's complacency. I think there's lots of residents that have no idea what's going to be proposed here. And I don't think they have an opinion one way or the other, or they don't have an opinion because it's not going to affect them. The people that it affects are here, have written emails, have signed petitions, and you need to consider them. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Romal Shah. We just moved like a year ago.
Can I get your address? I'm sorry. Your address?
401 Hillandale Drive, Bartlett. First address and house to the property that they're proposing. The thing is, because we were looking to buy a house, we think in Bartlett because of the family value, and so we were going to go anywhere but Bartlett. We looked at the mirrors, how it do with the family values and all that. So that's why we looked into it. That's why we decided to buy that property. We knew that going to be a commercial property coming pretty soon. We wouldn't mind any strip mall or anything like that, but when we have like that kind of property, like I've been to a lot of parties, I know people get drunk and go out on DUIs. I had a lot of friends, I drove myself drunk. There are people said they're going to have some haps, or cops do it, but still I was able to get out the property fine. No one was able to do... There'll be a lot of people coming to my property when they're puking and all that stuff. So I'm nervous later. So that's why I feel like there'll be a lot of people driving drunk around in the neighborhood. I don't mind if it's outside, like on the main street, if they build it like on 59 or Lake Street. That's fine. But in the residential, most of the around the area, if it's banquet hall, like from anywhere, it's on the main street. It's not in local residence. Thank you. I hope you consider that.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carlo Madoni. I live at 224 Lido Trail. I've been living this property for 23 years. Love the area. Raised my family. All of a sudden, we're here. What are we doing here? This is wrong for the board. And I addressed the board. I don't care about the business expert. I just addressed board right now. This is crazy to propose something like that in my backyard. We're talking about 100 feet away from my backyard. When I open my sliding door, what are I going to see? I going to see 37-foot church or chapel or banquet hall or... I have no idea what's going to... You know, I got an idea the way it's going to look, but I think it's wrong. I think it's wrong for the board to even consider that this particular location because the way I see it, it's too small. It's a very small area. We're talking about what, three and a half acre? I don't think it's enough even to have a parking lot for an establishment like they want to put up. This is what I believe. And I don't think that for 23 years, I loved my area. I love Bartlett. The only thing I don't like about Bartlett, taxes. I've been paying a lot of taxes on my house, like everybody else is here. Now to the point that we pay almost $1,000 a month. That's a lot of money. I don't know for you guys, but for some people, that's a lot of money. Okay? And you know what? I still pay it. And I don't complain of it. But this is time, but this got to stop. And when this got to stop? This proposal is insane because it's going to bring to my 100 feet, I would say, but between 90 or 100 feet, I'm not sure, behind my fence, my property line, it's going to bring noise, it's going to bring drunken people, it's going to bring, God only knows, traffic. I mean, this has really upset me so much, and I'm sure it does most of the residents that live in East Point Estates. Like I said, I've been living there for 23 years. I think you guys should really consider at the end of the night before you cast this vote, because I believe in Bartlett, I believe in you guys, and you guys should look after us. I mean, they just here for the money. Okay? And I don't knock you guys because as a businessman, you guys, it's just business. Okay? But even say that, you guys have so much land in Bartlett, so much open land that's considered business or commercial.
If you could conclude your remarks, we'd appreciate it.
I won't. We're talking about three and a half acre. Okay? So small. I think it's too small for an establishment like this. And frankly, I tell you, it will be the worst mistake you guys will make tonight. At the end of the night, if you guys are going to go ahead and vote yes on this project, it will destroy the community. It will destroy 60 families, the lifestyle that we live, in particular on the weekends when we want to relax and enjoy the family. We will have just a noise, a bunch of drunken making all kinds of...
We thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
... So I think you guys really should consider, because I'm against from the beginning, I've been attending about three or four meetings, and that's wrong for you guys to sit there and just pretend to listen.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up. It has been up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. [applause]
Hi. Good evening. My name is Oscar Moncaut, and I live at 207 Lido Trail. I want to think about this very seriously. Okay? I'm going to be less than 200 yards away from this disaster. I don't care who this person was coming here telling me that it's going to be a great thing for our neighborhoods. It's a horrible idea. Okay? Think about this. Friday night, I have three kids. I have a four-year-old, I have a six-year-old, and a 10-year-old. We are hard-working people here. Okay? We get a gun night, we are tired, you know, we want to pay our taxes, but for that, we need to work every single day really hard. We'll get home Friday night, midnight, and I'll be laying down on my bed and listening to that music coming from that facility, Friday, Saturday, possibly also Sunday. Think about that. Would you like to see that, to hear that every single night? I don't think so. I really don't think so. Like you were saying, there has got to be another facility, okay, another place to build this... I understand about the business part of this deal, I get it, but not here. There has got to be a vacant land somewhere in Bartlett if you guys want to build this. Besides that, I still don't think that's a good idea. Okay? Because actually, I called today Bartlett Hills, okay, and apparently they booked their facility about, you know, every other weekend. I don't think that's enough to sustain a business like that. Okay? So please think about that. It's very serious, and I really, really am very concerned about this project in Bartlett. Very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jim Sauter. I live at 237 John Drive. I built my house in 1995, and I've lived there ever since. The problem with this project that's going to go on, Ashton Gardens, is, like he said, it's just too small for what he wants to put on there. What he said at the zoning board meeting was that if he does have 300 people, which is, he said, is only 20% of the time. The other time, it's going to be about 148 people. And these are his words. So that 20% of the time, that's like 10 weekends. And he says what he'll do is he's going to kick out his workers, and he's going to kick out the DJ, he's going to kick out the band, they have to find another place to park. Okay? And he said that he's going to have them park the metro station. What I fear is that these people, instead of being oh, seven tenths, eight tenths of a mile away, they're going to come on Lido, they're going to come in the East Point Estates subdivision and park there because it's a block away. You know, if they have to get off at 9:00 or 11:00 or 1:00 because the shift or the people, they say, we have too many people here and they have to leave, they're going to park there. They're not going to wait for a bus to come and take them to the train station. He's the one who said it. He said the 20% of his time. So what my address is, he may have the parking for it, but then when he does get overcrowded, he's going to put the parking in our subdivision. If I was working for him, that's where I'd park, like the parking lot was filled here. So where did I park? I parked across the street. And the guy at the liquor store, he told me I couldn't park there because I respect that. It's his business. I took a spot away from him, so I moved. Okay? But when we get out there in the street and tell the people that, I'm sorry, you can't park here because this is my street, you guys are going to say it's a public street. They can park there. Okay? So what are we going to do? Are we going to get signs every weekend that we can put up and say, no parking, police order? I mean, you do it on 4th of July. I hate to do that here, but if that's what we have to do, is that what we're going to have to do? We got to ask ourselves these questions. What are we going to do with this? Do we have a solution for it? Because I haven't heard one. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments, but I really would appreciate it if we've approached, I think, all the objections. Please, I'm not going to cut you off. But please go up to the podium. If anybody has another, a different viewpoint or some other issue, we'd be glad to hear. Go ahead.
My name is Barbara Meese, and I live at 843 Pear Tree Lane in Bartlett. There's been a lot of things that are negative, and we wanted to know if there's any solutions. I don't know why we're not trying to promote the Dominix property. It's on a major thoroughfare. There's plenty of parking, and there is easy in and out. If it's going to be anywhere, let it be in another community. But I don't know what we've done to promote Dominix. That's...it's an eyesore. It's a big building. I've contacted myself, Trader Joe's, say we need something like that around here, and they said they're not interested in developing at this time. So I'm against Ashton Gardens. I think the property is too small. I understand these people's property, having their families trying to entertain on the weekend and have all this routiness, and I'm totally against that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be very brief. My name is Dennis Shogren. I live at 1142 Ancient Oaks Drive in Bartlett. We've been here for 16 years. We had one of our three children married at a reception at Villa Olivia. I don't think it was our first choice, but what was, wasn't available. Villa Olivia was, and it worked out great. Beautiful in every way. What I want to say to you as accountable to taxpayers, and that's been heard about already, you're setting up competition. And you're competing against yourself or ourselves. And I think that's not very smart. House divided will not stand.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Michael Baggett, 200 West Lido. I'll be very brief. First of all, both of you hopefully have seen the emails I've sent. I want to thank those of you who have responded. I appreciate the response and the consideration of the thoughts and the concerns of your citizens. I appreciate the response. It's duly noted, and we appreciate that. Number two, I'm going to talk briefly about the silent majority. So first of all, you got an email from me today about the petition that was signed. 268 of your Bartletites are against Ashton Gardens. So it's not a silent majority and just the people who are sitting in this room. Every person I've spoken with is against this location, against where it's located at, and it's the worst place to put that business. More importantly, today, everyone's given their addresses. Have you noticed anything about who's been speaking? Only a few from the East Point Division. These are people from all throughout Bartlett who have come up here and told you how they feel about this project. Please consider that when you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Patty Omo. I'd be remiss if I didn't come up here and talk because my son...
Give us your address, please.
Is usually the one up here. 225 John Drive.
Thank you.
He's always the one, that's the youngest one up here, talking. So I should get time and a half. Okay. Ashton Gardens. I really don't care how beautiful the outside or inside of this facility is. I don't care how many blasted trees you have around the perimeter or how high the fence is. Besides the noise, late hours, intoxicated people, and traffic congestion, parking is still one of the main problems that no one has been able to solve yet. There's a lot of this, if this happens, then we'll do this type of action. But those that live here do not accept that as good enough. There is no solid plan in place. I might be crazy, but if you don't have enough land to provide parking spaces for your guests, then you shouldn't even consider building on that parcel of land. Either you have enough land to accommodate parking, or you don't. And Ashton Gardens simply does not have enough parking spaces, period. They've already told us that. If my family was invited to a wedding, we would most likely be taking three separate cars there. And that's just for one family. I don't think you're taking that into consideration. If there were only one couple going, you can't assume that they'll be driving together. Chances are that they would be meeting there and driving in two separate cars. If I arrived and I was driving around the parking lot because the parking lot was full, do I have to wait until someone tells me that I cannot park there anymore? Do they then hand you a map where you're supposed to go park? So now your patrons are supposed to find the designated parking area, which is a mile away, park out of the way, and wait for a shuttle bus to take them back to the facility? And then, when they want to leave at the reception, at whatever time that would be, they will have to wait again for the shuttle to take them back to their car? How terribly inconvenient that whole scenario is, which leads me to what I know will happen. Instead of waiting for a shuttle, most people will try to find the closest available parking spot. And that, my friends, would be my neighborhood. People are naturally laser.
Hi, my name is Patty Omo. I'd be remiss if I didn't come up here and talk, because my son
Give us your address, please.
is usually the one up here, 225 John Drive.
Thank you.
He's always the one, that's the youngest one up here talking. So I should get time and a half. Okay, Ashton Gardens. I really don't care how beautiful the outside or inside of this facility is, I don't care how many blasted trees you have around the perimeter, or how high the fence is. Besides the noise, late hours, intoxicated people, and traffic congestion, parking is still one of the main problems that no one has been able to solve yet. There's a lot of this, if this happens, then we'll do this type of action. But those that live here do not accept that as good enough. There is no solid plan in place. I might be crazy, but if you don't have enough land to provide parking spaces for your guests, then you shouldn't even consider building on that parcel of land. Either you have enough land to accommodate parking, or you don't. And Ashton Gardens simply does not have enough parking spaces, period. They've already told us that. If my family was invited to a wedding, we would most likely be taking three separate cars there. And that's just for one family. I don't think you're taking that into consideration. If there were only one couple going, you can't assume that they'll be driving together. Chances are that they would be meeting there and driving in two separate cars. If I arrived and I was driving around the parking lot, because the parking lot was full, do I have to wait until someone tells me that I cannot park there anymore? Do they then hand you a map where you're supposed to go park? So now your patrons are supposed to find the designated parking area, which is a mile away, park out of, out of the way, and wait for a shuttle bus to take them back to the facility? And then, when they want to leave at the reception, at whatever time that would be, they will have to wait again for the shuttle to take them back to their car? How terribly inconvenient that whole scenario is. Which leads me to what I know will happen. Instead of waiting for a shuttle, most people will try to find the closest available parking spot. And that, my friends, would be my neighborhood. People are naturally laser, lazy. People do not want to rely on a shuttle to take them back and forth to the cars. I, for one, would try to park in the nearest location to the banquet hall that was available. And if we do not have no parking signs, or maybe require a parking sticker on our cars, people will choose to park right in front of our homes. No, thank you. I never thought that one day I wouldn't be able to park in front of my own house, because other people were parked there to go to the nearby banquet hall. How do we prevent this from happening? How do I prevent strangers from parking right in front of my home, coming back late at night, and getting into their cars after being loud and obnoxious? And who knows what my kids get to see? I never thought we would need no parking signs, or better yet, have parking stickers on our dashboard to park in our streets.
If you could conclude your remarks, we would appreciate it.
Just to let the board know, there's already one neighbor that backs up to the lot that has their house up for sale. They have been in this neighborhood for as long as I have, which is 23 years for me. In this peaceful, family-oriented, close-knit neighborhood, where you could let the children play and not be worried about drunk strangers that would be wandering around all day and night. I ask you this in conclusion. If this were your neighborhood, would you want this right beside you? Ashton Gardens should not be considered, because they do not have a large enough property to accommodate the facilities and the parking that is needed to run their business. This is not cool, Bartlett. Not cool at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think unless, unless there's someone else that has a totally different outlook on this, I think we'll conclude. Any comments about Ashton Gardens?
Completely different.
Oh, all right.
Hi.
We'll take you at your word.
At my word. Sharon Falco, I live at 416 Jervy Lane in Bartlett. I've listened to everybody, and I wasn't at the earlier meetings, and I'm sure that everyone feels us on the board, that there's some positive things about this. I'm strictly speaking from property value. It is not a good idea. So I just asked a question, is it possible that you can set up a mass meeting where everybody could come and sign a petition that was not for Ashton Gardens? I mean, why couldn't that happen? I am sure thousands of people would show up, I'm sure hundreds in Bartlett would prefer not to have this. Yes, you hear from all the people that live in the neighborhood, it's there, it's in their backyard, it's not a good idea. And, and I showed the house that backs up to the commercial area. My buyer is not buying it because of what's going to be built there. It's a beautiful home, I'm sure that did not help the homeowner. But, that being said, I'm sure there's a lot of stats that say this is a good idea, but just speaking from real estate, you know, it's not going to add value to the neighborhood. It's not a good idea. And so, you know, what can we do as homeowners to bring other positive things into Bartlett? What can we bring? There's a lot of vacant properties, a lot of vacant buildings, our downtown is basically kind of bust. What can we do to make it more positive? That is not a positive adventure, it really isn't. It's not good. So, I don't know if it helps, I'm sure you've done your studies, but I don't agree with that, and I'm sure there's a lot of local agents that don't agree with it either. We all talk, nobody's thinking it's a great idea. Thank you.
One more, one more. You're going to be the last one. So wrap it all up.
This is Mario, and also I live in 4 Hill and Dell, so they are going to be behind my house. In 1976, after I finished my college, I got my engineering degree, I went to work for this company as a service engineer. A year later, I got a call to come to this little town, I didn't know where it was, and it happens to be in Bartlett, right across from here. It was a factory, if you guys remember, it was a factory. So I came at work, I went home, I told my wife, I was in this beautiful town. I fell in love with Bartlett. Three years later, we moved to Bartlett. My kids were little, we bought our first house in Bartlett, and then we moved to our second house. So we've been there since 1981, and what I'm asking you is, please keep Bartlett beautiful. Keep our town safe. So please, don't let it fall apart. I have a question for you, because, Miles, sir. In the meeting at Pasta Mia, my wife asked you a simple question, will you like to have this palace behind your house? And you, you didn't answer. You came with a different answer, but it was a simple question, will you like to have a castle behind your house? It was a simple, simple answer, yes or no? What it tells me is that you don't agree. You don't think that is a good idea, to have this in your house. And now you're trying to sell us to have that in the back of our house. Also, you mentioned that you are going to have two executives, two managers, to come and manage your place. Will you be, will you be capable to tell them, hey, this would be a good business? Why don't you guys buy your house at East Point? Will you be able to do that?
I think your comments should be directed to the board, not to petitioner.
No, I just want to clear my point. He's not convinced that he's doing a good business.
Petitioner's not giving testimony at this time.
He's not convinced that he's doing a good business. Do you think we're going to accept that? Thank you.
Do you have any other comments to make? Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, you want to close the town hall portion of our meeting, and go to our standing committee reports.
Would the petitioner, would the petitioner like to reply some of the comments?
I don't know if that's appropriate right now, is it? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Brad Schreiber, president of Ashton Gardens, don't know if I'll be able to do all this in three minutes.
Well, you're confined by the same rules.
I'll do my best.
Name and address, please.
Brad Schreiber, 429 Traceway Drive, Montgomery, Texas. This is our fourth meeting, and I have to tell you, I've done this a number of times, and this was the most exciting, I've got to say, of all of them. There's been, first of all, we are required as a business, and, and I realize this is a very emotional topic for a lot of people. And there have been accusations, there have been opinions, there's been, Mr. Baggett at one time said that we're going to bring crime into this community, and held up the statistics from, I believe it was the Seville, it had a couple of pages worth. We have presented, actually the board has, through Freedom Information Act, acquired our crime statistics from 12 years of business, 5,000-plus events, and there's four, none of which were major, all of which were handled responsibly, so that is a false, uninformed accusation. We have done, excuse me, abided by all of the requirements for parking, traffic, noise, light, et cetera. On the business side, that's required. Many people have, we, as I stated in the very first meeting, you know, we, we have other properties in small communities, we have other properties that have homes adjacent to the, to our facility, similar to here. We have letters from mayors, from law enforcement agencies, from homeowners associations, saying that we are nothing but model neighbors and great contributors to the community. The parking seems to be a, a lot of opinion thrown around, with the parking seems to be one of the major concerns. Mr. Sauter, who seems to get his facts wrong at, at all these meetings, who at one point, unfortunately attacked Roberta Grill in one of these meetings, and tried to counter some of the comments she had made, which were false. I did not say, and it is not true, that we have 20% of our events that are 250 above, it is actually 2.2%. The parking issue is almost a, is almost a nonexistent
We'll need you to conclude soon.
Sure. It's almost a nonexistent problem. We've presented statistics for that. Either we can choose to ignore the studies that's required, that we've done, all of our due diligence has been required, or not. We, we cannot combat conjecture, or people's opinions, or anything like that, everybody's entitled to it. This, this board represents the entire community, we have done all that's been asked of us by the board, and, you know
You're going to have to wrap it up.
Thank you. The facts are what they are, we've presented everything that's been asked of us, it's a, a good project for all the right reasons, from a tax standpoint, we'll be contributing about $100,000 a year, we'll be creating jobs, all of the other things that we've said before, so
Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight. Order, order. Come on, we're not like that in Bartlett, are we? Okay, thank you. Right now, we'll conclude, that concludes the town hall portion of our agenda. We'll go to our standing committee reports. Chairman Renke.
Thank you, trustee Aaron's. We have two items on planning and zoning this evening, first is Ashton Gardens, and second is the Downtown TOD Plan. With regards to the first item, Ashton Gardens, well, we've got to get this on the floor, folks, so parliamentary speaking, I move to approve ordinance 2016 dash
82?
Sorry?
82.
82. An ordinance approving of a preliminary final PUD plan granting special use permits for a planned unit development, reception banquet hall, place of assembly, serving of liquor and building height, and granting variations for parking and landscaping for Ashton Gardens. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Renke and seconded by trustee Cameron to approve ordinance 2016 dash 82? 82.
Before you vote?
An ordinance approving of a, of a preliminary and final PUD plan granting official use permits for a planned unit development, reception banquet hall, place of assembly, the serving of liquor and building height, and granting, if I put on my glasses, I'd probably do better. And granting variations for parking and landscaping for Ashton Gardens. At this time, is there any discussion?
I would just point out that because of the protest that the neighbors adjoining the property filed, and that is with respect to the special use, it requires 2/3 of all of the trustees of the village holding office, which would be four trustees. Similarly, there is included a variation that received three a votes, two nay votes, but the village ordinance requires four positive votes from the ZBA to be a positive recommendation. And under the state statute, since it did not receive the positive recommendation, that likewise requires 2/3 of all the trustees holding office, again, four trustees. So the vote is the same with respect to both, they are included in the single ordinance, but just so you know, for it to pass, it would require four yes votes to pass.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. The one thing that I really want, you know, first, I respect everyone that came out this evening, and I appreciate all the comments that were made. But there are a couple of things that really need to be said, and I made just a few notes here this evening, I've made a few notes at the last few meetings, and some of the things that we need to talk about is competition, people are concerned about competition. But, you know, the experience that I bring to this board, I've served on the plan commission for 34 years, 32 as chairman, and I think I have a right when I say this, I've seen this before. We have competition in this town, we don't restrict the number of dentists that we have in this town, we don't restrict the number of chiropractors we have in this town, we don't restrict the number of hair salons we have in this town. It's called free economy. We have a developer that wants to come into this village, he wants to take a parcel of property, which he's entitled to. There's a special use that's affiliated with this property, and that's why it's here before this. I had mentioned before, and I don't know specifically what trustee said a strip mall, but I know I specifically had mentioned, or laid out, the number of different uses that could be out there on that property. And I believe that this is the least of a burden that would be on the people that surround that community. You may not agree with me, which I'm sure you don't, but that's the way I feel about this. I believe that there's inaccuracies in your objections and your opinions. I've looked at everything that our board has put together, I've listened to developer, our staff has given us information regarding the concerns that you have, and that's why I repeat that, I believe there's inaccuracies in your objections and the opinions that you have. And in reality, in reality, I believe that your fears are unfounded. I just want to talk to you about some taxes, okay? Everyone talks about taxes, we pay too much in taxes, too much in taxes. We have a developer that's here before us this evening that would aid in alleviating the tax burden that we have. Is it insignificant? You know, it's, it's minimal, of course, but we can't be anti-business. We have to take a look at what these, what these areas are zoned for, and we have to work with these developers. You know, the parking that he had talked about earlier, you know, we've, I've personally looked at the information that's been supplied by staff, and I, based on what we've looked at, and this was available, I don't know why other people haven't seen this, but it's less, 2% or less. He has a program that's worked out, it's not going to be dropped this off, he'll have a valet there, the valet will take them to the metro station in the 2% or less cases, the shuttle bus there will bring them back. It won't, I don't believe that parking will be an issue. We also have, also have our police chief that talked about enforcement of parking, we could set a zero tolerance for that, which would be enforced. But, so, you know, those are some of the things that, you know, I'm concerned about, that you're concerned about, but again, I don't believe that we should turn our back on this developer. I think it'll be a boost for the economy of Bartlett, and it'll bring more people to this village, and Bartlett does need a boost, especially the downtown area. We talked about the TOD plan, which we'll, which we'll discuss shortly, and, you know, we talked about the TIF, and I'm sorry if you don't agree with me, but that's what I feel. My vote will be for the developer this evening, and I just want to share something with you that my father shared with me many years ago, and it is true. And it's, you know, and he said, careful what you wish for, you may get it. And I'm not sure that the next developer is going to have a package that is so nicely wrapped as what our developers bring forward to us this evening. So, that's all I have right now.
Does anybody want to add anything to that? Okay, I just have a few comments. This, this lot has been zoned business, I think since 1978, and surely you folks knew at the time when you moved in, if you're backing up to it, that that was zoned commercial. The owner of the townhouse has a right to develop, or to sell that land to be developed, and the only way you can get around that is to all get together and buy up that lot, so it isn't developed. You've had, I have to tell you, if, if I had lived there for such a long time, and all, and all of a sudden
tell you, if I had lived there for such a long time, and all of a sudden, a developer came, and we were, and the village was seriously considering allowing that developer to develop, I'd be real upset, because I've been used to that lot being vacant and well-cared-for, I might add, not like we would our own laws, but, but well-cared-for for all these years. So, in a way, I'm trying to say that you have, you have to understand that a landowner has the right to develop his land, and it is zoned commercial. I agree with Ray when he says that this package has been put together very nicely. We deal with developers all the time. I think the man has great integrity. I think he's honest, and I think he'll be easily, easy to deal with. And so, at this time, I would say that my vote will be yes.
Any other comments? Okay, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Renkey?
No.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
No.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Motion fails. Over.
The motion fails.[1089.58][1089.58](APPLAUSE) You know, I, I'd also...
Get out of the javel.
I would also like to add, to the folks that are here, that if you don't think we took your petition, if you don't think we took your petition seriously, or if you don't think this was a gut-wrenching nightmare, you're wrong. It's very difficult for us as trustees, I'm sure, to make these kinds of decisions when the neighbors are so against it. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it.[1133.25][1133.25](APPLAUSE) Our next agenda item, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was wondering why I was here. The next item on planning and zoning tonight is...
If you would be kind enough to be quiet upon your exit, we'd appreciate it.
I lost my...
Aaron? Trustee Renkey?
Well, yeah, she's...
Why don't you just give it a minute?
Okay. I should have thrown something at you. I'm not paying any attention.
I don't know what I'd say with it.
If you'd like to take your discussion out into the hallway, we would appreciate it, and thank you.
Madam Siniver, can you hear me okay now? Talk a little louder. I don't have a lot in me tonight. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the downtown TOD plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Jim Plonzinski.
Can you close that door, please?
Renkey.
Close the door. Close the door, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
The downtown TOD plan, as you know, has been discussed through the RTA's grant process with our consultant team led by Solomon Kolwabens, also including the Goodwin Williams Group for Economic Development Analysis and Fish Transportation, and the members of the Steering Committee. Since July of 2015, the proposed TOD plan was brought to the village board on September 6th, where it was tabled, and staff did additional discussions with the consultant and with local businesses that were concerned about the plan's impact on the Bartlett Plaza area. The staff subsequently met in the plaza, distributed copies of the plan, and answered questions. The TOD plan is back, it was discussed again at the October 4th Village of the whole committee, at which time further testimony was provided by our consultant, Christine Carlyle of SCB, and at that time, the matter was forwarded to the village board for a final vote. The caveat at that discussion, the plan would be, the progress and an update on the plan would be discussed in five years, and that has been added to the attached resolution for review. It is in front of you, and I believe the correct procedure is to remove the matter from the table.
I move to remove the TOD transit-oriented development plan from the table.
Second.
Second?
Yes. We'll call on the motion.
It's been moved by trustee Renkey, seconded by trustee Carbonaro, to remove the TOD discussion from the table. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Renkey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now I move to adopt Resolution 2016 dash...
Eighty-three?
Eighty-three, a resolution approving the downtown transit-oriented development plan.
Second.
Moved by trustee Renkey, seconded by trustee Hopkins. To pass Resolution 2016 dash eighty-three, a resolution approving the downtown transit-oriented development plan. Any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll, please?
I'd just like to make a comment, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I made comments earlier about this, simply because I was concerned about the small businesses in the Bartlett Plaza area. I think this came about as somewhat of a surprise to a lot of the people in that plaza, even though it was a public meeting, and even though it was slated for the downtown area. I don't know that the actual downtown area was envisioned to be Bartlett Plaza at the time. I certainly have no objection to considering Bartlett Plaza as a downtown area, and now that the actual businesses have been appraised of what's going on, and the potential to be reviewing this in five years, I think that the plan has merit in the downtown area, primarily where people are necessarily displaced, which more times, as I think about it, it will probably not happen for years and years and years to come. But I wanted the small businesses to at least have the opportunity to know what was going on, before they were blind-styled with information that they had no idea that what was happening. So, that being said, I do believe this plan has merit for the downtown area. I believe it is a conceptual plan that will take the village in a direction, and I think there's areas that we can review. So I do plan to vote favorably on this. That's all I had to say.
Any other comments?
I'm just curious, in the coming months ahead, if we adopt this plan, which I think we will, what is the staff's first steps?
Well, I think that we would like to do some of the things that the plan recommends. Obviously, with anything that you would want to implement in this plan, there's probably a financial aspect of it, but one of the things, and Terry talked about it earlier, is the complete streets policy. That's something that our Bike and Run Committee has started reviewing, and will make a recommendation on. The speed limit analysis, whether or not that would get adopted, those are some of the things that we would look at, pedestrian striping on the sidewalks. And then, the question as to whether or not a TIF district would be considered, obviously would be something that would have to, that the board or committee would have to give us direction on, and we can do that analysis. We would also have an opportunity, as we have developers who have expressed interest in the downtown, to provide some guidance for those developers to redevelop sites, or to focus on certain sites. So those are, there's a numerous number of things that we can do, and those are some of the things that we would consider.
You know, I think when we do our strategic planning in January, it will be a good idea to spend a lot of time on this, and have the board identify some of the directions that they would like us to start with and make some progress on. Thank you. Okay. Okay, will the clerk call the roll? Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Renkey?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is it? I guess so.
Okay. Closing committee, Chairman Hopkins.
There is nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Police, I'm sorry, Finance and Golf, Chairman Daeney.
Well, Finance and Golf?
Yeah.
Trustee Aaronz, we have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, I just wanted to hear you say that.
Yeah, thank you.
License and ordinance, and all of our items have been covered under the consent agenda. Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro?
Nothing to report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. And the Public Works Committee?
Thank you, Madam President. We only had one thing, and it's been placed under the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have any new business tonight? Any old business? Questions or answers?
Yeah, I would, wouldn't mind making... Hello?
Oh, hi. Do you want to say something?
Well, I don't know how delayed it is.
No, you're good.
I would just make a comment that I know that was a tough decision with the Ashton Gardens, and I'm just hoping that years and years don't go by before we get another business that's going to take a look at that area, because that's, that's going to be unfortunate if that stays empty for a very, very long time, which is, is most likely, I would guess, the case. So, I can say it's not something that I look forward to, seeing that empty lot for years to come. But, the board voted the way they felt necessary, and I respect that, so...
Thank you, President Wallace.
And is any, yeah, and, yeah, it's...
How are things in the...
It's 93 degrees in Kaohsiung, Taiwan, right now.
Very nice. So, and are you making good diplomatic liaisons with our sister city?
I exchanged gifts with the Vice President of Taiwan two days ago.
Wow.
Very good.
Did you get his autograph?
Get a whole, whole update when I get back, so...
Good.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for representing us.
Yep.
Okay, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Daeney to adjourn the meeting. Motion passed.
May I take the roll?
Oh, roll call.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?